All the meeting order, have an indication?
Father, we thank you for today, and we thank you for all that you've done, all that you're doing, the things you can see and the things you can't see. Our trust is in you, and thank you for our community, our leaders, and we just ask you to bless this evening and all that you're gonna do in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
Look to approve the agenda as amended.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, the second by Commissioner Belden to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Employee service awards.
It's a good honor for me to represent the fire department and give this to Derek Champlin, captain paramedic, for his ten years of service. Derek's been a volunteer a little bit longer, but Derek does an excellent job for us. He's always there as paramedic for us and he's been involved a lot with teaching for us and helping with the collaboration with college and work on the college programs and stuff. So I look forward to Derek's promotions up and hopefully someday he'll take over my job. Thank you.
This is where you give your speech, Derek.
Thank you.
It's an honor to present Fire Chief and Interpolate Chief Eric Ross with his ten-year interview of appreciation award. Really appreciate him keeping us in line. He is a great debater, selfless man, and I can bet that he is very good at playing devil's advocate for us. Knows what he needs to do, helps his departments to run like a well-oiled machine, and we just appreciate all of his work and dedication to the community. Congratulations.
This is Paul Lequire. He's worked for ten years. He's the collections specialist.
We can see on camera.
He's a collection specialist. He makes sure everything flows as it should, to the place it needs to go. Has a great job, and I appreciate all the work.
Aaron Hayes, our park supervisor. He runs that crew down to the parks, the cemetery, airport, and all the mail and everything like that. He's been here for ten years. His experience fifteen, ten, very mission. In the position, but his experience and knowledge and his ability to more than anything fix stuff that pops up, whether it's electrical, plumbing, welding, specialized, customized, things that make him valuable. So I really appreciate everything he's done, especially in the last year with the change in leadership. He's been able to keep everything running smooth and help me out a lot too, so I really appreciate it.
It's an honor to appreciate to present Jeremy with the certificate for twenty-five years of service and dedication to the city of Coria. And we appreciate all of his knowledge and his, he gets some time as a well operator and works his way up through utilities director, and that's definitely an honor to work his way all the way up. So we really appreciate your work. Thank you for helping us to fix random things here around city halls. Well, he's a resident fix-it expert and for helping us to maintain our sense of humor, especially on dark, lonely days.
Thought mine was a typo. This is Gary Straight. He's been here for thirty years. He's my foreman for the water department. I've worked with him a lot of holes in the middle of the night, a lot of cold nights. Been a great experience, and I appreciate everything he's given us too.
One person couldn't be here, James Bowler. He has also twenty-five years, so James is the second longest serving employee. Jeremy's the third. Now Gary is the longest-serving employee we have.
Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate everything he will do to keep the city run so efficiently. So, thank you. Okay, we'll move into public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any public comments? We'll move on to our discussion agenda then, starting with our housing subdivision developments.
Mayor and Commissioner, are you already aware of our efforts for solving some, I'm not gonna say it, helping us to meet some housing needs that are in the community? And there's still a lot of moving parts. We've not yet heard back from Kansas Housing Resource Commission on the Mih grant. We should hear sometime this month. But there are several other steps that need to happen, and so tonight we're gonna talk through some of those steps, and then I'm gonna ask for your guidance on if you wanna proceed now with those steps, or if you wanna wait until we hear from the Mih grant. So as we're looking through that, through potential charter ordinance related to KSA fourteen-five-seventy and fourteen-five-seventy-one that also deals with the charter ordinance, it's a little bit later on our agenda. We've got Kevin Cowan on the line from Gilmore and Bell Bond Council to kind of help talk through that a little bit, what that issues of that charter ordinance would mean for us and how they help us, help benefit us. We also need to talk through rural housing incentive district and the next steps for that and how that sets us up to bonds, and Clayton Kelly with Piper Samblers on the line with us to help share with us what the current bond market is like and kind of the next steps of what that looks like. Then we'll talk through plating. The property that the hospital had donated to us does need to be platted into lots before we can start building homes on that. And that plating process has some different steps and takes some time, so Jason Johnson, Campbell Johnson's here to kind of talk through that with us. And then we also have Deputy in the audience with us from Central National Bank to tell us a little bit about what happens right now with respect to mortgage rates and kind of what he's seeing on his end of things. So we'll start back at the top there with the charter ordinance. Kevin, would you like to explain a little bit about what this charter ordinance is and how it can benefit us and set us up for success with issuance of bonds for the infrastructure?
Sure. I can start my video. I don't know if I'm on screen there or not. Hopefully you can hear me. The charter ordinance that is before you relates to a statute that's applicable to cities of the second class and bond financing for projects that are part of your CIP plan. And we've used it in a number of places, just sort of depending upon the circumstances and what the projects are to get authorization for various projects. In this context, the utility of this charter ordinance would be to authorize the projects in the rural housing incentives district. And a little background on that, so there are various public infrastructure improvements that would serve that area. Our general obligation bond authorization statutes are fairly liberal and broad as it relates to public water supply projects. So any public water supply project can be fairly simply authorized by resolution of the city. There's no, you know, notice and protest provisions or election requirements. You can just move pretty quickly through that authorization process. However, other improvements, sewer system, and in particular, street improvements are a little tougher to authorize if they are new improvements. And streets in particular, I always tell people that if you are building a brand-new street and it's not a main trafficway, it's not one of the main thoroughfares, it's pretty tough to get there from a bond authorization standpoint without having a bond election. And typically, when you have a newer subdivision like this and you're going to have street improvements, those would be paid for by special assessments. And so, you know, it's a newer subdivision, newer homes, the homeowner's going to pay for the infrastructure to serve them. And that's not the case here. It's a unique situation where we're gonna have the rural housing incentives district. But it's not going to, those proceedings won't authorize general obligation bonds, and so we need to find, again, just more general authority of the city to do these sorts of things. And so, really, the focus when I've talked to Amy about this is, has been on the street projects, because again, it's tough to get there without an election, and presumably, we don't want to have an election on something like this where there are authorizing proceedings with the rural housing incentives district, and it's not a large project, and it's, it is fairly self-contained. We're not talking about you know, a large mill levy increase or something like that to pay for the debt service. It's much more narrow than that. So that's a long way of saying, looking forward to when we would have the city authorizing a project, particularly the street project, but we would probably use this charter ordinance for the water, the sewer, the streets, all of the infrastructure that might be necessary, just because it's that broad, but it's really the street that's driving it. We would, it would be nice, it would be convenient to have the charter ordinance in place as the authority and avoid any election requirement on a project like this. And having said all of that, the charter ordinance requires two publications and a protest period of its own, so there is some of that sort of input from voters even at the charter ordinance level. So that's kind of the background. And again, it's, it is a fairly broad statute that would allow, or fairly broad charter ordinance that would allow the city to proceed at some point, if the charter ordinance is effective, with authorizing and issuing general obligation bonds for projects that are part of the city's CIP plan. And, and we can approach it a couple of different ways. This particular charter ordinance does give the city the opportunity to subject line up the charter ordinance, to subject any particular project in the future to notice a protest or an election requirement if a governing body in the future so desired. So I don't know if any of you started looking ahead and thinking, well, this would be fantastic for this project. But what about future projects? And the answer is, sure, we can use it for future projects as well, and that would be left to a future governing body to decide sort of the process in that regard. Election, no election, notice and protest, it may just depend on the project in the future. So I say all of that to, to indicate this is fairly surgical. I mean, it will give this governing body at this time the authority to do these projects without any further process. But in the future, whether it's this governing body or another governing body, if you had another large project and you thought it was one that you would like to use this charter ordinance but have some voter input, maybe publications, notice protest, that's built into this charter ordinance as well. So we've tried to cover all the bases of sort of how will we use it in the short term, and how will it perhaps be used in the future? So again, that's the charter ordinance process. Charter ordinances have to be passed by at least a two-thirds vote of the entire governing body, and for these purposes, governing body does include the mayor. So mayor and commissioners, whatever the entirety of that number is, it takes two-thirds, two-thirds vote, so a supermajority requirement, and then two publications in the sixty-day protest period to become effective. And the thought is, if we take action on this tonight or soon, that may then lead to a good place from a timing perspective, that this becomes effective in, you know, two to three months after publications and sixty days, and that might align pretty well with when we wanna start talking about actually issuing bonds to finance the improvements.
And I'll take you back onto that statement, the memo in here, I talked about being able to proceed in a more timely fashion. And from my perspective, we'd apply for the Mih grant. If we find out this month that we're awarded, what the Department of Commerce wants to see is us spending the money of the grant within eighteen months. If we were to follow the statute and have an election, we would have to set that up for April or possibly next November, and that would use up some of that time for that grant. So that's my primary purpose in asking for approval of this charter ordinance to give us that flexibility, that need for speed for a project that we know we feel good about for the community.
Kevin, can I ask, what's the mechanism for a future governing body to force, or to make, you know, to go to an election if it's kind of a bigger project that might be?
Yeah. So, and it's, it's in this charter ordinance, and by the way, I should have mentioned this earlier, that's the primary thing in the existing statute, the KSA fourteen-five-seventy that's been referenced that we would would alter, make ineffective and inapplicable to the city because it's not uniform. That's kind of the threshold. If it's applicable but not uniformly applicable to all cities in Kansas, then you have the opportunity to use home rule and your charter ordinance powers. And that statute as it exists requires an election. And, but again, sometimes things are done purely for election avoidance. Here, I wouldn't say that's the case. Some of it's timing, and again, the nature of these projects are not sort of citywide necessarily get voter input, but in section three of the charter ordinance, it allows the, a future governing body to adopt an intent resolution, and that resolution, which authorizes a project and bonds, and that resolution may contain, but is not required to contain, a provision that the bonds be subject to a publication of the authorizing resolution and then a thirty-day period following publication during which ten percent of the qualified electors of the city could protest that authorizing resolution and then force it to an election before that project and those bonds would be authorized. Or that resolution, this is B, could be subject to approval by a majority of the electors of the city. So it, we start by saying that future authorizing resolution may contain, so it's not required to contain, a future governing body could say, and that's what we're thinking of on these projects, that it would not contain these further provisions, and so you'd be fully authorized, but it may contain a requirement for publication and a protest period, or a requirement that it be approved by a majority of the electors. And so that part reads a little bit like other statutes that we might encounter in the general bond law, where maybe a protest is required or an election is required, and we just build it in here to give this governing body or future governing body on other projects the opportunity to use this charter ordinance, but still have it be subject to a protest period or an election requirement.
Thank you.
And we'll take action on that charter ordinance later on in the agenda today. So if we move on to the rural housing incentive district, next steps in that involve doing a resolution of intent to begin formalizing that process, and that'll involve adopting a redevelopment plan and to review in detail the financial part related to that. And then there is a protest period, and then we do the ordinance then next spring, and all of that has to be done before we can issue bonds. And so Clayton, are you prepared to kind of share with us a little bit about what the bond market's doing now, what the selling is, and then walk us through what that bond issuance process would be?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, so just maybe just starting off with kind of general market overview in the bond market and what we're seeing over the past, you know, six to nine months, it's been a pretty volatile interest rate market, to say the least. Interest rates have, have risen quite a bit, and that's just really a result of inflation and what the Federal Reserve is trying to do to really kind of stave off and kind of keep inflation from continuing to rise. And a lot of what that is, is just they're increasing their Federal Reserve, federal fund rate. And so the anticipation of when they stop doing that is really kind of what's driving this, this increase in rates over the past, you know, six to nine months. Until they see some progress on that, the Federal Reserve's gonna continue to increase those rates. And recently, they have seen a little bit of progress, but the core CPI or core inflation is still continuing to progress and increase. And so the market really expects the Federal Reserve to increase rates another fifty to seventy-five basis points before the end of this year, or that's half a percent to three-quarters of a percent before the end of this year. We're really hoping that we start to see peaks in inflation before the year end and more or less stabilizing the market, because a lot of what those increase in rates is doing is causing typical buyers of bonds, institutional funds to really kind of sit on the sidelines and say, we don't wanna participate right now. We wanna kind of wait till we have a better idea you know, where rates might stabilize before we start participating again in the purchase of bonds. And so all that kind of just goes to say that right now, the plan for the financing of this project really is, kind of think of it as a two-stage approach. The first is doing temporary financing, which allows for the for you to receive funds to be able to start construction, but only finance it for a couple of years. So a two-year period, let's say. And so that provides funds immediately, but not locking you into a specific interest rate long-term while we're seeing this extreme volatility. And thirdly, what that does is, when you start thinking about how these will be paid back through incremental revenues of the development over, starting over five or six years until we really kind of have a stabilization of what those revenues are, and that just comes as a result of homes being built, three or four homes being built through the first five or six years until you have all the homes built, essentially all the homes assessed on the tax roll. And then at that point, which would be after about six or seven years, you really have a good understanding of what revenues are each year. So trying to, if we just went straight out for a long-term financing now in an extremely volatile interest rate environment with somewhat uncertainty of what those incremental revenues would be, you'd really be kind of locking yourself into a very uncertain environment. And so the plan that we have in place is temporary finance now, and then come back in two or three years after that temporary financing to provide permanent financing for the rest of the, the period, the twenty-five-year period. So that's kind of the plan right now in terms of kind of that two-phased approach of kind of temporary financing, come back in a couple of years, permanent financing, and we just think with how this particular development will be producing revenues, and then on top of that, how volatile interest rates are right now, that's the best approach to take at this time.
Clayton, is there any restrictions? Like, let's say we move forward and we pass the resolution of intent for the RHID, and we pass that redevelopment plan, we pass the feasibility study, then we get to the ordinance. Is there any timeframe within there or by a certain time that we have to issue bonds then to start construction?
No, it, once you kind of, that's having all those things, having all those steps in place really authorizes you to do that, but there's no, unless you're trying to reimburse yourself for expenses that you've previously paid prior to going out and financing those temporary notes, there, there's no, if you come back a year or two years later and say now is when we want to actually temporary note this, that's fine. And Kevin might have more comments to that, but that's my understanding.
Yep, that's accurate. I agree.
Any questions, officials? We'll roll on to plating. So the property that the hospital donated to us, or the hospital proper is, is is not platted right now, and we need to plat that into multiple lots to be able to sell for homes. Then there's also property that the hospital donated to us on the south side of it. It's planted at Sunfire Drive, and it's planted into seven lots. We'll need to replat that section to get that into four spaces. So Jason, go to come up and kind of walk us through what that process is and about how long that'll take.
Sure, absolutely. In order to, so maybe back up one half a step here, so to speak, in order to have a mechanism by which to give or deed or sell those properties, once it is available from the city or the city land bank to private landowners, you want to have a, you know, just like many of you already own a lot that you can then give them a deed for. The mechanism by doing that is to prepare a document called a plat that divides up the total sum of the property into those individual lots. And we, our office would potentially work with the city to develop, develop the layout. We've already done some preliminary ideas. I think you guys have seen those of what that might look like. Those lots, those lots then would be, you know, we would deed lots so-and-so to so-and-so type of thing. That is, that is, as Amy said, that is a process. It is a process that is established by the city through the city zoning regulations that are already set up. So things need to happen to prepare those documents. Things like surveying needs to be done, not only to create the boundaries of the property and develop the lots, but we'll also need surveying to develop potential infrastructure plans as well, too. All that surveying needs to happen, and then you take that information and you turn it into plat documentation. At that point in time, it then rolls into the city's process for approval of a plat document. So then you're talking about going through the planning commission and coming through this commission with those documents for approval. We are estimating, based upon our experience in doing these type of projects, that that plating process from the time you say, go, get started ASAP, to the time where we have a plat ready to go could take two or three months. You could be looking at sixty to ninety days, something like that. Hopefully, at the same time that that process is going on, you know, plans for infrastructure are also being developed, kind of going on at the same time. Permits that need to be obtained for that infrastructure are happening. All of that can kind of happen at the same time, so we're killing two or three birds with the same stone there type of thing. We're estimating that that, including the plating, including the design for infrastructure, could be a turnaround of as much as a hundred and eighty days to a point from where you say start. Could be a turnaround of as much of a as a hundred and eighty days to a point from where you say start that we have plans that would be ready to go out. To bid to contractors. This would include the planning process, this would include the permitting process. Um, and the design and development of those infrastructure plans.
And that would also require an agreement between us and Campbell.
Yes, an agreement between us and whomever the city would like to use. Obviously, Campbell and Johnson would love to assist the city in this project. But yes, we would need to, um, we would want to enter into an agreement for those services. And we can do that separately, one agreement for the plating and and we can do one separately for the design. In fact, I would recommend that. Uh, but they could both be taken care of at the same time.
So it's a hundred and eighty days, that's six months of our eighteen months that are lost then, you know, not lost, but.
Absolutely.
You know.
Be used. Absolutely.
So um, the MIH grant is going to be like a little bit at a time.
Yeah, so um recall that there was two, two projects that we asked for within that MIH grant, in in fill development and the subdivision development. And so I think that we could immediately begin to use the MIH grant for the infill development piece. And then for the subdivision development, it would start a little bit later. And what we're hopeful for is, yes, they've said that eighteen months you have to spend it. And it's possible that we can get very close to spending. Recall that we are recycling some of that money throughout the process. But I think that we'll be able to show significant progress and we can request an extension if we're showing significant progress. If we decide to delay any of these processes related to RHID um bonding or plating. Then that does take us further into that timeframe and it becomes harder to justify that extension. So, but yeah. Any questions for? Um, then the MIH grant award again, we haven't, we haven't heard back from them at this point in time. A large portion of the MIH grant is related to building those new homes. We're building those or intend to build those as spec homes, so they don't have a defined owner at this point in time unless somebody steps forward. As we're starting to build and says, put my name down on one. Um, but we're going to be intended building a spec homes. And then the buyer is responsible to get their mortgage and to be able to repay that mortgage and and meet some certain criteria for that. So. Jack, would you mind coming up here and kind of share with us a little bit about what the current environment is for homeowners mortgages?
Yeah, so Clayton kind of stole my thunder there a little bit, but as anyone that's watched the news, listened to the radio. Um, of course, Federal Reserve right now is fighting inflation and the way they've done that is to raise interest rates. And so. Average home mortgage rates in January ran around three percent and now they're around seven. So some speculation for next year, going into twenty twenty-three. Some people say, hey, it's going to be seven percent through most of twenty twenty-three, maybe going as high as eleven percent. Toward the end of twenty twenty-three. Fannie Mae, I, for every source that you can cite saying it's going to be eleven percent. Equal number of sources that say it's going to be six percent. I would say nobody has any idea. What I would say everyone thinks is that in probably we would see some kind of correction. In one to two years, which. Sort of falls in line with when these houses would become online for sale. So if they were for sale. Two months from now, it might be a different story than we're talking eighteen, twenty-four months. I would say the biggest takeaway from it is going to be. Uh, as 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 these increasing interest rates have caused the housing market to kind of. Uh, slow down currently. Um, a lot of that is, is we as consumers, a sticker shock, we have grown accustomed to two, three percent interest. What I would say is two to three percent interest is an anomaly, not the norm. And so. Yes, I think we will get even higher than uh seven percent in the short run. I think we'll come back down. I think that we as consumers are not going to probably see two, three percent. I think realistically that six to seven percent would be. Probably the long-term average that we'll kind of see even forward. So.
So we won't get the one point six that we got on the wastewater treatment.
I don't think so. I don't think so. Um, you know. They they've raised rates very quickly here. Over the last eight, four months. When they ultimately, until they start seeing that inflation slow down, we're going to probably see them go up. But once they, once they see that inflation taper off, I believe, you know, everything that my understanding is is. They'll bring those rates back down. They're going to want to keep that economy good. Now, they're probably not going to come down obviously as quickly as they went up. But everyone's pretty sure those rates are going to come back down. But what that comes back down to, again, the general consensus is. This new, what we've seen this normal of two to three percent for the last ten years. The new normal is maybe five to seven.
Well, we based our feasibility off of six point five, so that sounds about right.
Yeah, you you know, I I think really. I I think back to when my wife and I bought our first house years ago. I think it was like six and a half percent and and we were ecstatic at that rate. I remember friends of ours saying, oh, I can't believe. This rates that we're in right now, I'm not justifying them. But. I think it's only the sticker shock value when you compare them to two or three percent. So when you, when you, if you isolate that sort of low anomaly, which we all enjoyed as consumers. But I don't know that rates where we look at ending up. Longer term. Are going to. Stagnate the economy. I mean, we we've all purchased homes at those rates.
One of the things that I'm hoping for is that. I feel like we're poised at a really good time to have this be ready to bid out when contractors are finishing up a lot of jobs that came in hot and heavy with. The big infusion of government work and then because of rising interest rates, if they're going to do just what they're supposed to do and things are going to slow down. So I'm hopeful that we're going to see hungry contractors for our infrastructure work. And then like Jack said, by the time that's done and these homes are ready to sell, I I really feel like we're going to hit that point where we're on that downward curve. And we're going to be poised very well to capitalize on that. So that's that's the way I'm feeling right now.
And and and, you know, it'll hit, it'll hit housing markets on the coast like with us and that's just where it was. I think the other thing you'll see is that may be beneficial here is is as that. As that, as that interest goes up and it slows that economy. Some of these building material prices are going to stabilize or downward trend. Which is going to help in the short term in this eighteen to twenty-four months that we lead up to potentially having these houses for sale, so.
So my questions for you tonight are, do you want us to continue to proceed working on the next steps of the RHID? And working on the next steps toward plating now? Do you want to wait until we hear whether or not we get the MIH grant? If we don't get it in November, um I know I've said to you before, I'd like to try again for the January um. Authorization, simply because people who applied last year for MIH in November twenty or in twenty twenty-one and did not receive it. Already have priority in the queue for this November issuance. We didn't apply until this September, until this year, so we're already a little ways down in that queue. So I'd like to try at least twice before we decide to shift gears, but wanted to find out from you, do you want us to proceed right now with the next step in the RHID? And with the next step of plating or just hold off?
So I think that. The RHID and or the MIH are both wonderful tools that if we we can have work in our favor would be remarkable, but I think. The long-term reality for Concordia is that that area is going to be a beneficial area for housing. Whether it's a very traditional model or utilizing one or either of these tools, so. In my opinion, the the cost of plating, that is not going to get much cheaper the longer we wait, so it's going to be a good. Resource for us to have, whether we are able to move forward now or not, but I'd rather be ready to move if we're able to. Than to try to scramble at the last minute and put it together.
Alright, so we'll have the next steps in resolutions and hopefully try to work in agreement with um Campbell Johnson, if you're okay with that and keep moving forward again. We will work through the community resources committee with Cloud Core Fund, so we're trying to keep everything as local as possible. Thank you very much.
Moving on to our action agenda, the minutes of the November second, twenty twenty-two meeting. There's been a motion by Commissioner Belden, the second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of the November second, twenty twenty-two meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number twenty-one.
I move to appro- appropriation ordinance number forty-one.
Second, there's been a motion by Commissioner Wentz, the second by Commissioner Hash to approve appropriation ordinance number twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-one ninety-three, rezoning eleven hundred Highland Drive.
Yeah, this is a ordinance before you come to the recommendation for the planning commission. We have a recent copy of the minutes and. Of that meeting and it was a unanimous decision to change the domain of the old hospital lot from. C two restricted commercial and R one and anticipation of a residential subdivision. Questions?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one ninety-three.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Belden, a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-one ninety-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-one ninety-four, rezoning fourteen seventy-eight Union Road.
Yeah, this ordinance is, this this parcel of land is right in between. The Cloud County Jail and this state maintenance facility, Kansas Department of Transportation maintenance facility. Uh, lot, seat block two of the Concordia North Development Business and Industrial Park and the zoning is. For a uh, the rezoning is for an anticipated food distribution warehouse, which isn't allowed in the. Current uh, C three zone, so.
Kirk, can you remind, I just, I don't remember, why was that zoning different than?
I don't know. I went back and looked at the history of that when that was plotted. Cloud Core and then the state. The county. And the city. All committed that and they picked out the lots and how they wanted to zone and there was some agricultural that came in because they wanted, they didn't want the farming operations. Anything with that. So they had agricultural, they had industrial and they had those three lots. For some reason, and I don't know why, were C three. And that was suggested by Kirk. I remember that specifically, but I can't remember why.
Yeah.
And then the first thing we did was the jail was interested in two of the lots, so we had to turn around and rezone them back to industrial. That's just kind of the way it goes, but I, we left that, you know, that lot. Thinking that maybe that C three would come in there sometime, but this is a fine. The fine use of that, it just has to be changed and uh, I really don't know why I looked at the history of that and and the whole. The whole read the minutes and everything. It's just everybody so excited about the new development out there, I think it's kind of accepted what was uh.
It was hard to guess, you know, what probably, probably hard to guess.
Smaller lots, they thought maybe different types of businesses, direct access off of Union Road. Maybe more retail type, but I don't know, but there was a little bit of discussion about that, but no real. I think it was in anticipation of maybe not a full-blown industrial type.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one ninety-four.
Second, there's been a motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Hash to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-one ninety-four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty-one forty-four, classified, non-classified pay scales. Amy, do you want to move, Kevin and Clayton are still on, you want to move the charter ordinance up? Are they waiting on that?
Um, yeah, would you guys mind doing that, moving charter orders? Oh, is that okay?
Just make it number twenty-eight, we'll have to change the numbers. Twenty-eight, yeah, okay. Charter ordinance number twenty-eight relating to public improvements and issuance of warrants. We're just looking for a motion.
Yeah, I would move to approve charter ordinance number twenty-eight.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Belden to approve charter ordinance number twenty-eight. For the discussion. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you both for being on. And you're welcome to say. Back to resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty-one forty-four, classified, non-classified pay scales.
Um, this res- resolution is uh represents the same percentage that was discussed during our budget meeting. Four point seven percent for all employees.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one forty-four.
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Lambert to approve resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty-one forty-four. All the, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty-one forty-five, employee handbook changes.
We saw in the memo.
One of my favorites.
We saw in the memo some changes that the department has. All of us discussed a couple of different meetings. We always have lively conversations. This, sorry, this guy behind me always wants his own. But he doesn't get his way. Anyway, uh, the the first item to be crossed off is just redundant. It basically says what the next two say. Um, as far as the next two, we added what's in red. Because successfully was never really defined. And so when someone hits six months, you know, you automatically assume that you can start. Um, using vacation, whatever, and we really didn't know what successfully was. So now they do need to receive a favorable evaluation. And section three eight, we just added dispatch. And um, so everyone under the police department roof except for animal control works off of the. Two-week pay period rather than a one-week like the rest of the hourly staff. And then three-nine on the callback, um, some of the guys would like to use their own cell phone. And. We've decided that they can, but they won't be reimbursed for that, since there is a phone that they can use. Six-four goes along with what we did last year or the year before. I think it was two years ago, where if you. Leave in good standing, you can receive payment for the vacation time that you have accrued. Um, obviously, non-good standing, then you would forfeit that. Um, six-five was already in there, it just was added into another section right above it and it made sense to make it a separate section. And so that doesn't read any different than normal. And. We just reworded eight-one a bit on G. On H. It used to only be public works and utilities that were subject to random drug tests as having a CDL. And when I did ask about it, we're with a different company now. And when I asked about it, they said anybody who has a CDL needs to fall under that. So that will be the fire department as well. And um, and then I, we're pretty much not going to give a choice if someone has caused damage or. Um, to themselves or to property where it's going to be turned in for a claim, then they will be drug tested. Drug and alcohol tested both at that time. Drug and alcohol tested both at that time. And on 11-4, we just combined basically 27 and 4, kind of said almost the same thing, which, so we just combined that. And then on G, we've had some issues here where someone may end up being suspended indefinitely. The way this reads, and they could be, you know, being, be paid for quite a while, so we changed that to without, and we are working on that a little bit more, but we didn't have time to cover everything that we wanted to figure out with that before this came up, so this may come back for approval in a couple more months or so when we get a little bit more detailed about that. And then just 14-3, we just crossed off the last sentence because we don't do that. That pretty much covers it.
As you mentioned, the, the item on G, I think that there could be a mechanism in which if the person is, is found to be not guilty, there's a mechanism to maybe go back and pay, but I think he's suspended without pay until the outcome of...
I think everything we've seen pretty much says that you do get your back pay if something came up down the road.
I think that's in there. Uh, in, in another section of our handbook already, I think.
At the very least, it deals with reinstatement, um, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, right now, if somebody did something very egregious, there's not much that can be done according to our handbook. Someone who's been here, you know, less than six months and they're still in that training period is a little bit different, but this doesn't give us actually way to do anything.
Sure. I'd move to approve resolution 2022-2145.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Belden to approve resolution 2022-2145. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Charter ordinance number 29, filling out, filling up city commissioner vacancies.
The way the, um, state statute reads, if one of you stepped down for some reason, then the, the rest of you would fill that position within 60 days, and if you were not um, able to do that, it would go to a special election, and that would, could be very costly, plus, plus take a whole lot more time to fill that seat. And so the league has suggested that cities do a charter ordinance so that they can choose how they want to proceed with that. And, um, it's been a little while since I read this. But I believe at that point, if that, if, let's just say, the, the rest of the body could not agree, this will allow the mayor himself or herself to fill that position and not have to go to a special election. So we haven't seen this happen for many years, but you just never know, and it's a good thing to have this in place, and the league definitely says it's a good idea to do it. So this will be just like Kevin was talking about with the other charter ordinance, it'll have to be published twice, and it won't take effect for 61 days after that second publication, so um, it is a little bit of a process to get this approved and in place.
Would in that situation, let's say that I, I have to step down, would the, would the individual who was appointed just fill the remainder of that term?
Yes. And the problem too, you go to an election, you can have three people get three votes, or you could have someone get the most votes and they say, forget it. So there's a lot of different variables there. It just seems to be a better way to fill the position.
Knowing that the position would be up for reelection at the end of the term, I think it would limit that choice being withheld, it would allow business to continue.
I would move to approve charter ordinance number 29.
Second.
It's been, there's been a motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Hash to approve charter ordinance number 29. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Admin vehicle bids.
We went, um... Earlier this month, um, I sent out letters to the various area dealers, new car dealers, and also published in the paper that we were wanting to receive bids for a new or new-ish vehicle that we would be able to take specifically out of town. Um, all departments use the one we have right now. The treatment plant uses it to run to Salina many times, or taking lab samples. Even Eric's, Eric used that the other day with a couple of his guys. Just a little roomier if someone needs to go out of town, and also if you take more than one person. So, uh, the one we have now has been great, um, it is seven years old now, and if you feel like Bruno would be fine to take a used vehicle. And
I'm fine with one of that.
His is even older, but as I said in the memo, um, we would like to pass that one on to the airport, the, the one out there gets used a lot. And that car, I don't know if it's even, I don't know if it's in the shop right now or not. It's not, okay. Um, but it needs several things, and it's an 83 Lincoln and probably not worth fixing, so... So it seems to make good use of vehicles as we pass them down, we wouldn't have to go buy something for that, and anyway, um, Amy and I looked these over. Really, there was only one that fulfilled all the needs of something that is roomy, um... I've gotten in this one out here, and you can tell someone 64, you know, drove it, and the seats back as far as it can go, but it doesn't fit a bigger person that well, it doesn't fit if you have I don't know, we, we've taken it when we had three or four people in it, and it's pretty, pretty packed, so... Anyway, the Ford Edge seems to fit the bill with that, it does obviously costs a little more because it's a bigger vehicle. But that is what we recommend this time. Hope you have any questions?
Do they have it available now, or do you think they'll wait?
No, we'd have to order it, we could choose our color and then it would take about six months. The one in Salina, the Nissan Rogue, um, that one was only if they didn't sell it in the meantime, so I kind of have a feeling that one's probably not avail- available any longer. The others would all be new, and I believe they already have them on order, and they're, they're coming in, but I'm not sure when.
We did have one Escape, I think Fuller's driving it right now, I know, it was, it was pretty cramped when Ron got it, he wasn't expecting it to be that, that small. Um, personally, I like a little bit more metal around us if we're using this to go down the highway, 75 miles an hour, when we go out of town, it's Salina, it's Wichita, it's Kansas City, to our conferences and our, um, state meetings and that sort of thing, so I would like a little bit more more metal around our, our precious partner that we're sending down the road as possible.
I move to approve the purchase of the 2023 Ford Edge from Farm Country Ford for $38,914 paid from the Vehicle Replacement Fund.
There's a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the purchase of the 2023 Ford Edge from Farm Country Ford for $38,914. For any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Land transfer to Cloud County Community College.
There, commissioners, um, you heard Jason Johnson talking a little bit about the plating process and the college is going through that right now, Caesar's here to, um, can share a little bit about their project that's happening. But on the piece of land where the college is, is intending to build a new facility, there's a small piece of land that the city owns, and it's actually a drainage easement, there's an existing drainage pipe in that easement. And it would make the plating process a lot more smooth, um, if we could just transfer that piece of property to the college for ownership and retain a permanent drainage easement instead. And retaining of that permanent drainage easement can be done through the plating process, it doesn't require a separate document. The college has done a nice job in the site plan review, we've all had a chance to take a look at it, they've done a nice job ensuring that that pipe stays so that it feeds water that drains from the south through that pipe and into the flood control area for 21st Street DM. Um, so their, their drainage plan does incorporate that existing pipe, it just takes the surface inlet out. A parking lot ends up being placed over it. Not a big deal, um, the college understands the risk of if we have to go in there and take up the parking lot, the pavement, if we have to actually get in there to maintain that pipe, but it's a much lower risk than building a building over it, and so it seems like a good risk to take to help their parking lot flow a lot smoother, so... Caesar, do you want to share anything about what's going to be built out there?
Yep. Is anybody on, I guess? Yeah, so it's a $13, $13 million technically, um, totally by donated dollars, so no tax dollars. Um, so we'll have the major, uh, premier programs as well, of course, we've got nursing, we've got renewable, which includes drones, um, so composites, um, also got solar, um, in addition, we'll have nursing, which will be a nice addition because that's our largest, one of the largest programs. Um, and then ag, we'll have a piece of that, and then we're adding welding, so welding lab, it's on welding shop, so we've got a program to start here, we're adding the house over here, so, uh, it's a, it's a nice space, um, almost 20,000 foot deep, and, uh, we think it's going to add value to the end, so. With our requirements increasing, so. Appreciate the city and the whole Bruno and his group to make this happen, so, thank you.
I move to approve the transfer of ownership of the city's parcel of land to the college contingent upon dedication of a permanent public drainage easement with a preliminary plat and to authorize the mayor to sign the deed.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hash, a second by Commissioner Belden. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thanks for being here tonight, Caesar.
Yes.
Reports, managers' report.
There, commissioners, you all had leaves at your table today, I mean, you lost the leaves as you walked in from the city hall, posted on the, the windows for all to see. Um, trying to convey an attitude of gratitude and kind of draw on our positivity here and all the great things happening in the community, so we'd invite you to fill those out, um, and then turn them back in and we'll post them on the windows for a few more days. We have plans to do something similar to this throughout the winter as well, just to kind of give everybody the feel-good, we know that days are shorter, so we're losing a little bit of our vitamin D sunshine, so hopefully this will help to cheer everybody up and keep that positive momentum going. The brown brand roof, we did go out to bid to replace that roof, um, and the insurance adjuster was also here recently when geysers went up to patch at the most recent leak, they got some hail damage, so we did call the adjuster out. Um, had pre- not previously been inspected after the last hailstorm several months ago, so we'll see if there's any results from that, um, but we do have a previewed meeting tomorrow, the bid letting will be November 29th, and then we'll bring it back to you, I think, um, the first meeting in December. Also, I'm going to be presenting at the Kansas Association of City Managers Conference on December 1st in Great Bend, um, invited to help present a little bit on that, what we'll be talking about, and then Tiger Wall, the city manager in Winfield will be presenting with us along with Kiel Kat, our principal here at the high school, and so we'll be talking a little bit about recruitment and retention strategies, along with how the high school is preparing students to be more career-ready, and several participated in the, uh, senior interview day yesterday, and very impressive students and how they do appear to be ready to go in the workforce already. And then, um, talking a little bit about how because this conference is geared towards city managers, so how do we as managers, um, kind of make sure that we're creating a culture and an environment that's, that creates a desirable place to work, kind of managing our stress levels so that we can, we can have everybody else enjoy being a part of, part of the team, so kind of an interesting conversation and kind of taking it on a baseball theme, so batting cleanup, you know, pretty retentive, successfully navigating the modern workforce, we'll see how that goes. If that's all that I have to report, I'm especially happy to answer.
Staff reports.
Just real quick, we had talked about kind of the way we're going to address, uh, nuisances, especially ones that are a little more severe than others, um, so, uh, I'm sure you kept an eye out on it.
You know, I want to tell you, I drove with a friend up that street and didn't say anything, and all of a sudden she said, what is going on there? And we had never talked about it, and so, yeah, it's noticeable.
Um, so as you've probably noticed, there's not been any, um, improvement, so the city will go ahead and move forward, uh, we do have a court word. And so we'll move forward on that and go from there, so. Just want to let you guys know, we're still working on it. I had hope, I drove by and there was a trailer, but I think he might have been dropping things off as opposed to bringing them up, so. But, yeah, so just want to let you know.
Thank you for following up on that, I appreciate it.
No other staff reports, we'll go to mayor commissioner comments.
I saw that the snowflakes are up, or at least partially, and it's my favorite thing in the whole fall and winter season, so kudos to those who did it.
And actually, the swag is back.
Oh, I didn't notice that.
Well, it's supposed to be back Thursday, I think. Along with the last five snowflakes.
And the Christmas tree is up at the plaza, too, the new one.
New one.
Just doesn't have quite the presence of the old one.
We're working on the ornament situation.
Oh, maybe that'll help.
When we ordered it, we got it pre-decorated, and it had like seven ornaments per, so and I sent a picture to the company and I said, is this what the vision, she says if it's seven, okay. So I have purchased some more ornaments and I worked on it on a 70-degree day. And it's still not to my liking yet, so, and I'm going to need some help, Jeremy helped set it up, but the groundskeepers and Jeremy will probably have to help me get a little bit higher, but we do have more ornaments, we're still slowly.
Oh, that'll, I'm sure that'll make a big difference, that'll help. Thank you.
I'd echo the comment about the snowflakes, um, we were out of town recently and, uh, on our way home, uh, it was quite the conversation as to whether the snowflakes would be up yet or not, so it's, it's definitely a family favorite of ours. Recognizing, you know, I feel like it's, it's kind of two ends of a spectrum, um, this evening we celebrated a lot of employee longevity milestones, um, and I think speaks to the quality of staff, uh, that we have working here in Concordia. Yesterday also, as mentioned, several, uh, of us were, were involved with the senior interviews, um, of our, you know, in high school, our younger s- citizens. Right, so how, how promising of a group they were, uh, and just it feels, you know, the hospital, and it feels like a really it's been a good place to live for a long time, and it just feels like things are really moving in the right direction. Really quality employees, really good quality students coming out of those schools. It's really exciting to see when we keep moving things.
I had, uh, two comments tonight, thank you to, um, the city for everything, giving us, uh, the hospital off the ground in the last few days, so for EMS and police and um, then the staff this morning at Bright and Shiny helping us move our last.
It was easy, everything was on wheel.
Everything was on a wheel, today it was easy, yesterday not so much, but thank you, we, it, and thank you, it's, uh, it's taken the whole community, and thank you to the community college, uh, without that muscle of, uh, about 40 baseball players, I don't know how we would have gotten yesterday done. So very, very much appreciate, um, this community. Second, um, Amy, that packaging for the housing tonight was exceptional, and so I know that's been a ton of work. I know other people are involved, but I know you take them on the line and share, so, um, that was just awesome, the way that that was put together, so thank you very much. Okay, so I have, so moving into executive session number one.
I move that the city commission recess into executive session to discuss employee employment personnel issues presented to the non-elected personnel matter exception, KSA 754319B1, with only the city commission in attendance in a reconvene in the city commission chamber at, let's say, what, 6:55? PM?
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Wentz to move into executive session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, questions?
Oh, yes, yes, my guys are in.
No action was taken. So now we'll look to another session.
I move that the city commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data or trade secrets of business, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B four with Amy Lang, Justin Farrell. If you read in attendance and a reconvene in the city commission chamber at seven fifteen PM.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Wentz to move into executive session for confidential business data. Any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. No action was taken.
At this time, I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a development agreement with nineteen oh nine Lincoln Street LLC.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Bellin to move in to, to sign a development agreement. The way.
Nineteen oh nine Lincoln Street LLC.
Nineteen oh nine Lincoln Street LLC, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
What needs to be there, and how long?
Attorney.
Fifteen minutes, um, all of you, Justin, let me.
I'm Ricky.
Oh, you know, next, no, I'm sorry.
Never mind, I'm playing my own business.
Well, this is your business. Uh, I move the city commission recess into executive session for consultation with an attorney for information, de-privileged, and the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two, with Amy Lang, Justin Farrell, and attendance in a reconvene in the city commission chamber at, like, seven thirty-five? PM?
There's a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Wentz to move into executive session for attorney-client privilege, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. No action was taken.
I would move that the city commission return to executive session for the aforementioned reasons for period reconvening in the city commission chamber at seven thirty.
Second, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion here. No action was taken.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Hash to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.